Okay, we're gonna start. There is a lot of traffic. I think there was an accident, so Councilmember Whitman ideally will come in at some point. Welcome all to the Ohi City Council's special meeting, the joint meeting with the Historic Preservation Commission. Thank you Historic Preservation for being here. Weston, could we have, and it's Tuesday, June 27, 2023. Could we have a roll call, please, Weston?
Yes, Mayor. Roll call for the City Council. Mayor Styx?
Here.
Mayor Protem Francina?
Here.
Councilmember Rule?
Here.
Councilmember Lang?
Here.
And Councilmember Whitman is not present yet. Roll call for the Historic Preservation Commission. Commissioner McHatten?
Here.
Commissioner Convery?
Here.
Commissioner Bisaccia?
Here.
Commissioner Walker?
Here.
And Chair Akins?
Here.
Thank you, Weston. And Chair Akins will say the pledge for us?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chair Akins. And approval of the agenda? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
And a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay, wonderful. All right, we will move on to discussion. And just so everyone knows, we have four items to discuss: the jail plaque, Matilah, the meritless adoption, and then the sequo. So we're gonna, we are, Brian and I spoke before, and we're gonna get through it in an hour, so we're gonna keep moving at a good pace, and we feel confident that we will do it. So I will hand it over to Chair Akins.
Excuse me, Mayor, and Chair Akins and I discussed this earlier. Can I take a few minutes before we start to talk a little bit about the commission, Historic Preservation Commission?
Yeah, sure.
And just sort of what our role is?
Yes.
Because there seemed to be a big disconnect recently about this.
Is there a chance we can do that at the end?
No, there won't be an end.
Okay.
Because we're gonna go like that at the end. I already know this. I know how it works. And I'll be quick.
Okay, yes.
But it's really important, and it'll save, I think it'll save time in the end and trouble. It was clear in the meeting two weeks ago that there's a big disconnect about how commissions work, so I did a little homework with Matt's, you know, understanding about digging into things and how you do this. But in 1909, the first commission was formed in Galveston when it was destroyed by hurricane. That's what commissions came about, to help a city come back together. The city leaders couldn't do it by themselves. They asked citizens who had knowledge to form commissions as volunteers and offer advice. You know, commissions that advise as opposed to commissions that are elected. Ohi has a commission that's based on the volunteer system of advising, same as in many small towns like Carmel, which has a really nice commission system, as opposed to elected commissions. We don't serve anyone's agenda, ever. That's not what the commissions are about, and that is, you know, a really bad road to head down because it creates fault lines. Our jobs are to be citizens who are knowledgeable, whether we're in the city limits or in the valley, and to offer that advice to support the city council. We don't make decisions. We're here tonight because we don't have action. We're here to get action approval from the council, as with the other commissions. And these are the disconnects that I heard the other night, you know, advising and representing agendas and taking action that's not in line with the council's, you know, elected agenda. So I just wanted to make it very clear that that's who we are. And the reason why commissions were ever created was because of that disaster in 1901, you know, to help a city come together. And that's what we're here to do. We're not here to change things. And so, you know, appointing commissioners without the input of the chair of the commission, without the advice of the rest of the commissions is, was a bad idea, I believe, in 2021, when it was changed. And those guys certainly achieved their goal by causing disruption, because we're seeing the disruption that they implemented in 2021. You know, my, my goal was to go back to the way it worked, because if it worked, you know, you don't want to fix it if it already works, right? So it worked. And now it's being fixed and fixed again. So these are the reasons I'm making these comments. But hopefully I clarified a little bit about what our commissions are doing. We're advising. That's what we do. No action. End of comment.
Much appreciated, Commissioner Convery, the clarity. And I just wanted to say we are all, or I can only speak for myself, but super grateful to all the commissions for all your expertise and knowledge and help. So we are lucky to have you. We do have one public comment, so.
May I make, I want to make a comment. Since you came in late, I know you're probably cutting traffic, could you listen to the beginning of the meeting, because it was very, very important for issues that are before us in the future?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have Kathy Smith, and we'll just take, and this is on all four topics, so Kathy Smith will be talking about Matilah. Thank you, Kathy.
Yes, at that lectern. My name is Kathy Smith. I'm a resident of the Ohi Valley since 1972. I brought my written statements, because I really want to get through all these points, and I know I don't have a lot of time. I've worked in the field of education in the Ohi Valley, in private and public schools, and I'm currently retired. I volunteer to teach art at Marmoni School, and I'm a member of the Board of Education. I speak to you, of course, on behalf of myself, not the entire board, because that's, that's not allowed. I trust that in the, in your preparation for this meeting tonight, that you reviewed the May HPC meeting, as well as the council's decision in 2017 to designate the district office property as historic. I touch on both of those events, because there were some inaccurate statements made, and I'd like to share a few points with you. And I know only one of you were on the council in 2017 when that occurred. At the recent HPC meeting, community members and Ohi Valley News were criticized for reacting to the administrative report that was presented. And yet, the exact same language is on the report tonight that's before you. Yes, it instilled a déjà vu moment for me, having lived through that experience before. And felt like it was restarting again. That time in 2017 was the first time in history that a property was designated historic outside of the property owner's application. And the language that was presented in May and to you tonight is still there. It reads, and refers to, "The Old Nordoff High School Historic District." The proposed historic district, is how that document starts. Historic district, yes, has a very specific term. It means a historic district, an area designated as a historic district by ordinance of the council. And it goes on to say other things, but I want to say that using those terms sets, for me, clearly, the HPC's recommendation that you consider it at some point as a historic property. I think the, this misunderstanding, or this hype that's referred to, would have easily been avoided by just saying the word "property." It could have said, "The Nordoff High School Property," and then we wouldn't have been happy, but we would have been able to pull it down a little bit. During that meeting, staff was continually, staff continually admonished the commissioners, and asked them to stick to the topic of studying the history, not the criteria, not using the word "landmarking," which happened over and over again. In the report that Mr. Walker presents, which you have before you, he does, again, review the criterion for dedicating something historic. And, but yet, it's faulty, I believe, that area number four is incorrect. Area number four, I think, should be cultural resources, but instead, he refers to the developer, which is still, I believe, part of criterion number three.
Ms. Smith, it has been three minutes.
Okay. Well, a lot more, but I will leave these notes with you.
Excuse me, I'm gonna make a motion that we hear the rest of this. This is a major decision to make.
I second that, yeah.
I appreciate it.
Oh, wait, well, all we can take a favor? Yep, yeah.
Can we go right to this topic, rather than the jail first, unless the jail's quick?
Well, the first two are very, very quick.
Okay, because now we're, my head's in, you know.
Yes, in the 2019 sequel report that we were seeking, we did find it. And with Brian's help, I was able to review it. It reports that the junior high school campus is, recommendation is ineligible for listing in the NRHP and the CRHR as a historic district under all four of those criterias. It goes on to say that because of the removal of its original buildings, the campus doesn't represent the various historical periods that is required within the criteria, and that individuals who attended, visited, or taught at the school fail to identify any direct significant association, and that must be a significant association per the regulations and what is set out in National Park Services 2002. I think it's premature for this discussion to go forward. None of us know what will happen with that campus. It may very well become a school again. And I personally, I wanted to say I'm offended, but I should instead say, it really hurts me that a government agency would feel like they are in the position to direct the oversight of a property that has been in the possession of another governmental agency for more than 115 years. I know we all change, that's true, but that doesn't mean that the people that are standing now are not dedicated to the history of this school district, and therefore the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Any comments online, Weston?
None online, Mayor.
Okay, we will move on to discussion, then. We'll begin with the jail plaque. Exciting. And thank you, Harry and Vesta Hunt, for being here. Much appreciated.
So, thank you, Mayor. At some point, I looked for the opportunity to respond to those comments. So I'm, we're here to talk about Harry Hunt, Sr. Earlier, I think, just a couple months ago, I think in April, a proclamation was presented by the city of Ohi to Harry Hunt, Jr., who is behind us or in the, in the area there. This is, was recognizing both his service in the military, but the service of his father, who was Ohi's one-armed constable who died in the, doing his duty and saving the community for them. In the HPC, we brought forth two different ideas. One was to do a plaque that would be placed on the Ohi Jail. He was very involved with the Ohi Jail. Harry, Jr. can tell you that his father used to leave he and his brother in the jail locked before he would go and do errands, and they would play jail. I don't know. But just those, those fun things. And so he was very involved in the jail. And so, the original suggestion was perhaps naming the jail after him, but the secondary suggestion was to put a plaque to honor his father. And so we made that motion. I made that motion. It was then seconded, and that motion was, was agreed to by the, by the unanimously by the HPC. So it was suggested to us by staff that the best way, the quickest way to get that approved, having senior calendar, I can agree to that, was to bring it up in the item here. And this is the picture that's most well-known about Harry Senior. Harry Junior was actually grand marshal in the Ohi Parade. At that parade, he and his family suggested that they would like the plaque to reflect this picture. And so what we did was, I have a long experience with plaques that have survived. This one is for David Utter, who died in 1996. It's still in place at the Little League Park down there. You can see, it's still in great state. So I had my wife, who did that, and who also did Kathy Smith's mother, who was a very close friend, who worked very hard. So that one's still down there, at the snack bar where she spent so much time. So I had my wife do a line diagram of that. Some of you have that in front of you. And then below that is a language that came from a three-plus page that Harry Hunt, Jr. gave to us when we did an oral history interview of him with his daughter Kimberly. And so this went off, the summation that I put together went off to the family. His daughter is anchored down in San Diego. I knew she would come up with great verbiage. And so these are the words taken from that, that his daughter put together. And so we would like to, we, the HPC, would like to answer any questions you might have. And we would like to entertain a motion from the council approving this going ahead and being placed on the Ohi Jail.
I'll make a motion. I'll second that. Okay.
That's a good question.
Sure.
Would that language be reviewed by the HPC before coming for approval?
It, it could be approved. It could come before the HPC. Again, this is language. So I looked at the language prior to it going, just pulled out all of the different articles that I could find, went to then the, and that information was put together by Harry himself. Harry will attest to the fact that when things have been reported on his dad, that they have not been accurate. That has been with most of us when things are said about our family. And so, again, this is what was put together by his longtime reporter for a major San Diego station. So I, I have confidence that this is the language we should go forward with, Craig, so.
I just think it would be good to have the commission go through it, because we look at it a little bit.
My microphone, please.
We look at it a little more, you know, with an objective eye, and I think it would, it would benefit from, from that review before, before being approval, because we've caught lots of things. There's even been plaques that have had to be taken down and put up again, because the information was incorrect on them. So I just think it would be a good idea to have the commission approve that and then have it brought.
May I speak? The reason why we put it on this agenda was to not have to wait until we can fit onto an agenda with city council. So if we keep with the basic language, but maybe just alternate some words here and there, can we go ahead with the approval tonight, so we don't have to wait? Because we don't know how long it will be before we get on the agenda.
Mayor and Chair and Commission and Council, it would be legal for the council to approve the placement of the plaque on the jail, which is city-owned, subject to final commission approval of the precise language.
Does the motion need a friendly amendment for?
I'll look to the mayor of the motion to confirm that that'd be the motion.
Yes.
Okay, great.
I will amend that motion to include that option. Thank you.
Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right, exciting. And thank you, Harry and Vesta, for being here, and all your contributions to our community and your families' dedication. Exciting. Yay.
Yes. So, again, the other thing that Harry lent me was the Purple Cross that his father. I had heard much about purple crosses all my life, but up until our HPC meeting, I'd never held one, let alone seen one. So, anyway, Harry was kind enough to bring this tonight, too. Thank you. Of course. We're gonna line up and take pictures over on the corner.
Thank you. You want to add?
Yeah.
All right.
Great, thank you.
We can move on to the merit.
Meritless adoption. Do you want to do that second? And then Matilah?
Well, let me just, real quick. So the, so the HPC, again, the information you heard, we, we reviewed this. There was some language in there that was corrected, that was corrected both in the HPC, that was also corrected by my going and appearing before the school board and explaining to them what had happened, what the attentions were, and also explaining to the school board and sending an email to them with the agenda, and also with additional attachments to them, so that they were aware of this meeting. So that language, again, an effort was made, and I felt was made at the school board to correct that, to advise them of what was taking place tonight. The HP, the Matilah Middle School, and this is what I said we would be coming to the council for, was solely to ask the permission, or their, not the permission, but the, okay, for the council to continue, for the HPC to do its responsibility. Our responsibility is to monitor any locations that may be historic within the city of Ohi, and if any activity takes place on that, to find out about them, if they're historic, and then to bring them to the city council. And what we were doing on that May 11th meeting was purely just looking at the history of Matilah Middle School.
Commissioner Walker?
Yeah, let's.
To respond to the.
That'd be great, thank you.
The document that I wrote. I was asked to come up with.
Be quiet in the audience, please.
I was asked to come up with some history of, of the old Nordoff Matilah Junior High School Campus. And I brought out a letter that I had written to the school board about a document that they had commissioned, which was a historic report on the property as a whole and the building they intended to demolish, which was the old cafeteria. And in that report, it was the consultant's introduction or use of the language that, that if you took a historic, a district made up of the whole property, that it wouldn't meet the Secretary of the Interior standards. And he wrote the whole document around the concept of it being a historic district, which was never anything that anyone proposed at the HPC. I took issue with some of the conclusions that he had written. So what you see in that document, I'm not sure if you got a copy of it, but is my response to that document that had been written by the consultant for the district, which they apparently didn't know about, but eventually got, found the copy of it. So I wanted to lay out what their consultant had said, and why I took issue with those, and why I felt that it was historic, not that there should be a, a whole district of that property. That was not anything anybody ever thought about.
May I ask? I also asked that the word "district" be taken out, so there wouldn't be any confusion, because it is confusing when you see the.
Right. I mean, I would agree with Kathy, the use of the word "property" would be better. And I think if ever it came to a spot where the council said, "We'd like to look at designation of that property that maybe only just a portion," because I think the part that my letter addressed were the buildings designed by, by Wilson there, not, not the properties down below by Ohi Avenue, or a lot of the other properties, which is what their consultant was considering when they said it wasn't historic.
One of the conversations I had a few weeks ago with Atticus, the president of the school board, I think he's the president, was the nature of, you know, landmarking, and that it does not preclude development, it doesn't preclude the building becoming another school in any way, you know? I mean, there are, you know, a lot of things you can do. And I gave him some links to look at other school properties across the country that have been landmarked and uplifted the neighborhood, or were used for teacher housing, all different kinds of really interesting proposals. And we talked about the fear of, basically, not understanding something creates fear, you know? And there was a very fearful article that was filled with a lot of misinformation from the Ohi Valley News that created a very fear-based reaction during our meeting, which I thought we cleared up. So I was pretty surprised by Kathy Smith's comments about, just various comments that I didn't feel were accurate. That happened, if anybody wants to re-watch that meeting and see what I'm talking about. But it is a fear-based reaction. I don't think it precludes any use of the school district, whether it's a school, whether it's, you know, turns into a development project.
If I could just add on to that, I recall when the school district had proposed putting a shopping center in there with a 200-room hotel, their architect actually seemed delighted in the fact that it had been designated a historic property and incorporated the historic property very nicely into his design, and even was going to restore the original tower on the building. So just to echo what you're saying, there's, there's nothing in, in landmarking or any kind of historic designation that prevents the use. It just encourages adaptive reuse and repurposing of the original historic buildings than bulldozing them and putting up something new.
And that pushback came from the community. It did not come from us.
Oh, right.
You know, the pushback against that development. And, you know, I was thinking about this story about where the commissions came from, from the Galveston Hurricane, and how that created this body that, you know, supports, that supports city government, you know, these volunteer bodies. And knowing that history helps to understand what commissions do. Knowing any kind of history helps to understand what's happening in today's world. It's called education, which we are really, like, lacking in a lot of places for many, many reasons. So, so, you know, I thought about the fact that in our joint session with Historic Preservation, talking about the history of the commissions enlightens everybody as to what we do. And going outside and seeing these various buildings tells the story of who we are as a community, and our place, and how we built this, and who did what. And it really, you know, elevates the community. So that's really the overall goal.
And that's something that, that the children of the community pick up on, too. And they learn about their community by knowing the buildings and knowing what they represent, and how the community developed.
I mean, the biggest example is, you know, a Holocaust museum. These are really important, you know, ideas that, that train people or help people to understand what came before, and that our decisions cause the future. So, you know, it's a big-picture conversation.
I do want to add that, at our meeting, we did discuss whether it's the, the district offices or the future of Matilah. It is important that we work together with the trustees and with the, the staff at Ohi Unified. I, I think that there was probably a better way to go around it before, but communication broke down. And I think that we have to make sure that that doesn't happen this time, that they are part of the dialogue and the decisions and meetings, making sure that we incorporate everybody, the stakeholders, into it. I think that everyone will come to the, I'm confident that everyone would come to the same conclusion that these buildings tell a story of our, of our town, and adaptive reuse. And reusing these buildings are, are an attractive way to keep our town looking like Ohi, but also bringing it into the, using them for what we need them to be used for. But I, I don't ever want to disinclude the trustees or feeling like we're going behind their back or anything. I mean, I think it's going to be communication and dialogue and education, and I'm all for that.
Sounds really good.
Yep. Councilmember Lang?
I just have a question. I mean, I know our, our school district is really, has really gone through a lot. And I, I feel for everyone who's on the, on the board. If, if we go forward with this, how would that impact their decision-making, or their ability to do, to, to have the freedom to do what they want to do or see fit to do with those properties?
So let me answer this, because I was very involved in the, in the first round, too. Worked with Kathy on that. The other thing is, this is a, the copy of the report. It's not something that I can, this is only a front-page copy. But again, this is 110 pages. It was demanded by the state because of construction that was taking place on that property. Much of the information that Craig relayed to us in that four-page report was also in this book, or in this report. It says categorical exemption, then it says cultural resources for attachment number eight. So again, and this information, as since we found the report, I called Kathy and I advised her of, of the report, again, because she and I worked together when the, of the process took place. To answer your question, your question is way beyond why we came here today. All we, all we came. All we came, and I don't want to see that in the paper inferring that that was our plan all along. Our purpose for coming here today was just to ask for the city council to understand that part of our responsibility that's called out in the code is to look at all potentially historic properties within the city of Ojai, to monitor and to make recommendations. Craig's going to talk about the historic structures and merit, the Matilah Middle School was on that. That report didn't just start in the last couple of weeks, that historic structures and merit was over, is over a decade old. And again, this is information that I relayed to the board. So, we are here just to say, is it okay if we continue doing what we're doing? We're not going, I've been in touch with Kathy, I've been in touch with Atticus, I talked with Mr. Monchar, who's the attorney on the board, he contacted me, I got them the added information, they were looking for attachments, not realizing that there was a hyperlink that took them to a document. So, we're trying to keep them apprised of any movement that we take place, but right now, we don't have any movement.
If I could just say one more thing about that, in response to what you said, is that all we do is provide recommendations based on a process that's been set down in the city code. If the school district came with a project that was a three-story modern building that was, that they felt was absolutely critical, that they had to bulldoze down the Wilson buildings and construct that, it would still be up to you, the council, to make that decision. And you could say, "We think the value of this that they're presenting to the community and to the district outweighs the historic value of those buildings," which is what we've done, is tried to show you what the historic value is, then you have that ability, following the procedures, to approve the project that they bring, that they bring to you. So, I just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Councilmember Rule?
Well, I mean, I love historic preservation, I think it's awesome, and I understand that you've been, you have a mission, so to speak. Having talked to a few of the trustees, what I've gotten from them is that they are not ready for this. You have five new trustees on their board, and they themselves, I think, would like to get some background and history, and understanding of what you do before you start engaging in a conversation with them about this. They're not ready, and I think Kathy said that. And I think we should give them the time that they need to better understand, you know, the Historic Preservation Commission, because, you know, there is some contentiousness about how you guys move forward, and not just with the school district, and I'm not in any way, you know, saying that that's right or that's wrong, but that there is. And we have so much discord already in this town, I would hate to see it be pitted, the school district against the HPC. They're not ready. They clearly said they're not ready to engage in a conversation about this with you. So, we would be putting them in a position where they would have to be ready, and there's five new, they have a huge amount on their plate. So, I would like to see this be tabled, at least for a while, until the school trustees come back and say, "We're ready to discuss this." I don't think in principle, any of them, you know, are giving a hard no, they're giving a, "We're not ready for this, we're still trying to wait ourselves out of new superintendent, you know, financial woes, et cetera, et cetera." And it is true, they felt blindsided, and there is no way to have them, to roll back time and have them not feel blindsided.
Okay.
Yes.
I think Mr. City Attorney wants to make a comment?
Okay. Yeah, briefly, just to go back to the point raised by Commissioner Walker, answering the question from Councilmember Lang, if the city were in the future, after public hearings and process, to landmark the Matilah site, like any other landmark site, that creates an additional layer of process that any proposed development project of a certain scale that would affect a character-defining element, which is defined in the Landmarking Resolution, typically it's your larger development projects, and certainly demolition, would have to go through, and that process is where you even recommendation at a public hearing before the HPC, and certain findings, in the end, yes, a project could be proved to demolish a landmark. There's an additional set of findings that have to be made, if that is on the table, and those findings have to be made in order, with substantial evidence supporting them, and it creates a basis for, if the council were to prove it, to ensure that those findings can be met, else it's vulnerable to challenge. It also triggers certain CECL applications, but CECL applies anyway to a big enough project. The other key component is, historically, the landmarking status has created an ability for the Historic Preservation Commission, and through it, the city, to negotiate regarding preservation. It sets a first priority for the site to look at adaptive reuse and preservation of the historic character-defining elements of each landmark, which, for a property owner who has a vision of complete demolition, can be a challenge. If the property owner's vision is adaptive reuse of what's on the ground, it shouldn't be a challenge. I don't think we know yet what OUSD's vision is of their site, as noted there, very early in their process. The city has the power, with appropriate process, to landmark it over their objections, as was done for the district offices site. Whether or not to do that is very much a council question on policy. Thank you.
No, I want to answer the big questions. So, Councilmember Rule, bringing this to the HPC to the agenda was initially brought to me in December. It came to us in June. That is partially because I have some control over what's said in the agenda, and partially because I had been monitoring closely what was going on with the Ojai Unified School District, especially the financial end, because I'm a retired chief financial officer, and that was abhorrent to me. But I'd been watching that, I'd been, I'd seen the disarray, and I did not, because I was involved in the last process, I was very sensitive to our interjecting, even anything as innocent as it was, just to find out about the property, the historic nature of the property. And that was delayed for several months, until it couldn't be delayed anymore, after a meeting was held where-
Brian, there's a booming from the mic. Maybe I'm too close?
Step back?
Yeah.
Sorry. Always used to these people speaking to the mic. So, again, purposely delayed, oops.
Something not like-
Hello? Better?
Good.
Okay, try there. Purposely delayed so as not to-
Move it, try something, because it's just, I keep hearing boom, boom.
Want me to turn it off?
No.
No, we need it in the paper.
Okay. So, again, purposely delayed so as not to interject ourself in a sensitive time with the school board. Again, I also went to the school board meeting, right after that meeting took place, introduced myself, I answered any questions that they had, I told them that we would get the information. Mr. Monchar asked me specific questions, any action that was taking place in this meeting. I told him the only action I anticipated was on the plaque, everything else was just purely discussion and informative.
A couple of things-
I think Commissioner Convery was next.
Oh, I'd like to, I think a conversation, responding back and forth is helpful, so that we don't have to circle back around, but if you have-
I was gonna talk about your comment, which is, I had different information from my conversations with the school board than what you mentioned, and that they were interested in learning more in a timely way. As Brian just said, it took six months from the first words to get even on the agenda, so we're looking at a year, at least, of just exploring and doing research. We only meet once a month, if we're lucky, right, Brian? So, you know, it's a very slow process, which is why it actually should start now, because Matilah's changing, and if it takes two years to start addressing it, you don't want to be up against a wall with something coming along, and then there's a big food fight, like there was over Chaparral and all the development that was going on there. And that was a very, very different conversation about communication with Chaparral, there were different issues, for sure. So, it's, you know, it's not rushing the school board to interact with us. Again, they weren't blindsided at all. That information was on the agenda in June, was it May? Oh, was it May? And then the Ojai Valley News wrote the most abhorrent, absurd editorial that had nothing to do with reality, you know, which caused everybody to get up in arms, and when we privately, or Brian called a few people, I called a few people, and said, "This is actually the truth, this is what we are doing," they were, like, relieved and happy. So, it's, you know, you've got to deal with the public, and the paper, and what's perceived and what's actual.
Yeah, so-
Yeah, I feel like maybe you didn't get all that information.
Well, I just heard Commissioner or Trustee Smith say that this was premature, and I have talked to two of the trustees who feel like it's premature, and who feel like they're not at a point where they can turn their focus to this, and if they want to be a hundred, if they want to be, you know, equal participants, they feel, regardless of what you feel or the HPC feels, they feel that they have, they were not prepared for this, and they are not prepared to engage as a hundred, you know, as an equal partner in moving forward. And I was at the school board meeting as well, when you presented.
Yes.
And I think, here's, when I was in college, there was something called "language is action." So, if I say to you, "I promise," I have said something, but I have also made an action. That is, a promise is an action. So, when you talk about discussion, I think that in some minds, it moves the process forward, and it is an action. It opens up a door, and it starts something that wasn't there before. And all I can say is, I have heard from two commissioners, and now from Trustee Smith, that they are not ready for this, and that is a fair statement for them to say, and it is something that we should consider. And I don't think, I heard Trustee Smith say that this was premature, they're not ready. So, the fact that the HPC is ready is well and good, but I would say, to have equal partnership, you need them to be ready as well. So, perhaps the idea is to get a timetable from them on when they would be ready to start this discussion with you and be part of it. And we have seen a lot of contentious issues with the HPC. We saw it with the El Roblar, we saw it with the Arches on the El Roblar, I mean, I'm not, I'm not going to-
That was a conversation during-
I'm not gonna, I don't-
El Roblar's not on tonight's agenda.
Exactly. So, I'm just, but, and I apologize for that, but there are contentious-
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So, that's, that would be my suggestion, is that we table this until the trustees are ready to talk about it. Fair enough, right?
Councilmember Lang, you're next, and then Councilmember Whitman, then I'd like to speak.
So, I have also, I've heard from one of the other commissioners about this, about not being ready, and about not having enough information, and the, and a lot of the, what we've talked about tonight. And I, and what I'm hearing is something a little different than what I heard when that person reached out to me, and that is that we're not actually moving forward, we're moving forward with more research and more information, is that correct? And not, and so, anything we decide tonight wouldn't be another layer of bureaucracy for the school board to have to go through. It is just, are we, are we going to allow you, or are we going to support moving forward with doing some more, more of a study? Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
That is correct. Councilmember Whitman's next?
Yeah, so, just for a little bit of balance, a few months ago, there was discussion about what was going to happen on school district property in the city of Ojai, and, boy, I was surprised to hear that the school district was making plans on property without my having heard any of that. And I called James, and I said, "Gee, James, has the school district been talking to you about these plans that they're talking about for, you know, the alternative plans for the different campuses?" And he said, "No." So, it's a two-way street. If the school district wants to be more in a partnership with us, then they need to reach out to us. And with respect to the rest of it, I echo, my understanding is exactly what Councilmember Lang has just expressed, which is that there's, there is no right that the city, and I'll defer to our city attorney on this, but there is no right that we would be impacting with a decision to move forward tonight with what the commissioner is asking us to do.
Moving forward with research and further analysis does not impact the school district's rights.
Yes.
Any impact on their rights would come later if the council were to approve a landmark status.
Right.
To the extent that the landmark status was impacted by the project.
Right. So, we're not making a landmark status-
No.
No.
Decision tonight.
Tonight is whether to pause or to continue the research.
And so, I'll make, I'll make one more comment, which is that, so I went to school at Matilah, and I have practiced law at the Santa Barbara Courthouse, not much in the last three months, but, or the last three years, I should say, but there's a great deal of similarity in the feel of spending time in the Santa Barbara Courthouse, and spending time in that north part of the property and those buildings. It's, you know, it's a treasure that we should be moving forward with looking.
Yeah, and my son went there, and it's a pretty delightful campus to be around, so I agree. I spoke to Atticus yesterday, had a really good talk with him, and I understand, Kathy, that you're not, you know, everything's up in the air right now, and I really appreciate, I am the school liaison, so I'd love to work together with, and this is a collaboration, we're all on the same team, and I know that we can work together in peace and harmony. And Atticus was completely aligned with that, and it just, so I think, is there a motion just to allow the HPC to move forward on this, from council?
I'll move for that.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Kathy, for being here. We'll move on to the, what's the next one? The merit list adoption?
Oh, yeah.
Yep. Commissioner Walker, thank you.
Yeah, we do.
And I just want to thank you, Commissioner Walker, for this beautiful work, because it's really lovely, and learned a lot.
And Meta Mayor, if I could jump in briefly, the council could, as part of tonight's action, move the historic sites of merit list forward, but it could not be adopted tonight because we didn't give notice to the individual property owners, who would need to be given that kind of notice for them to raise any concerns or questions they may have. So, the council, much like the prior one, the council can move it forward, but couldn't adopt it tonight, because we didn't give individualized notice to the individual property owners, as would be required to adopt something about their individual properties.
Okay, and I had something to add.
Thank you.
Craig Walker, at our last meeting, did a beautiful presentation on all of these buildings and the history, and the structural history and the cultural history. So, if you haven't watched it, I think that would be a really great thing to watch, you learn so much, it's, it's kind of, you become, have a full understanding of the story that we're trying to tell.
Right, and just a little history of the process, because we started it when I was on the commission 11 years ago, and at that time, the council had commissioned a study by San Buenaventura Research Associates to do what's called a windshield study, to look at every property in Ojai and rate them on historic significance and on integrity. And they went through, and they named all these buildings, gave them ratings, and the council didn't want to move forward on anything relating to that survey, but they did say, "We would like to know, what are the historic properties?" Not landmarks, because we know what those are, and we've already proved them as historic, but the ones that are potential landmarks are the ones that maybe don't rise to the level of landmarks, but deserve consideration and some protection. And so, we took that on, and we developed this list, which you should have a copy of, I think. And this was vetted with the property owners. We had two historic, we had two public hearings on this. One, the HPC had a public hearing where property owners were invited, and then there was another joint meeting we had with the council. joint meeting we had with the council, where we also had a, a public hearing, and the property owners were all invited to come. And, but for some reason, I don't know if it was an oversight, or there was an interest on the council, or whatever, but it was never officially formally approved. It was never disapproved, it was just never came before the council for their, for their approval. And so anyway, now, it, it is important that we do have an approval from the council, because it gives us something to work with. It allows us to say, these properties are historic. It doesn't, the, the only regulation it provides is that the owner can't demolish the building or significantly alter it without first coming and getting a review of it. So it's just like it earmarks it for the planners. Because a lot of times, your planners are people who have moved to Ojai from Temecula or some other city, and they don't really know the history, and they look at the property, they don't know if it's historic or anything about it. But if it's on the list, the historic sites of merit or structures of merit list, then, then they know that this is a property that at least needs to be reviewed, just like you might want to review a property for parking, or for traffic impacts, that you would want to review it on that basis, too. So, so that's basically all that it, it does, and it does that for SEQA, too. So instead of just granting an exemption to a, a project of, because it, they don't know if it's historic. If it's not on the list, the city doesn't see it at all, it hasn't been any historic value. So this will at least put it on the radar of the city, and allow that to be a study that's done on the property before some catastrophic demolition or alteration is done, where you can't go back from that. Once it's done, you can't retrieve the property. So it's good to be able to review it upfront. So the, the SEQA, or the state asks that you upgrade your, your list every five years, so that, that it's new. Some, some properties may be taken off the list, some may be added, and there are probably others that should be on this list. Certainly, the properties that were granted historic status by the state, through the state historic district, those should be added to the list. But we didn't put those on this list, we just left the ones that we'd already vetted for your consideration.
I have a question. So are you saying that because they were vetted 11 years ago, we, we still have to re-note, we still have to re-note?
Yeah, we need to provide notice to the current property owners. Notices may have been given 11 years ago, but there's been a fair amount of transfer of property since then.
Surprise!
Yeah, to, in particular, to avoid litigation that may well be likely.
Yeah.
Uh, we can reduce that risk significantly by giving individualized notice, complying with the code, which requires individualized determination to lose the properties.
But again, it's not, it's not like landmarking, it just, it just earmarks the property that says, this is a property that you should look at.
Okay.
Craig, can you talk a few seconds about why? You know, I mean, I was gonna say, if everybody wants to go on a field trip, we can go to Palmdale, and we can go to Thousand Oaks, and walk around the malls, and then we can go on a field trip to Carmel, and Julian, and La Jolla, and walk, and downtown Pasadena, and see the differences. And then you see what the value is about having these historic structures of merit. And if you can do that in your minds, it's a lot of driving, but that's really, I think, you know, the value, understanding why, the why of this.
And I'm not sure if it's the true in Ojai, but in a lot of cities, I think a demolition permit is ministerial. I don't know if that's true in Ojai, but sometimes properties can be demolished and never even catch the attention of...
It is, it's true here, yeah.
Demolition permits are ministerial, with a couple of exceptions rooted in particular site status. So a landmark status, a council-designated site of merit, anything city-owned, anything with public art, that's city-approved public art, and one or two more exceptions.
So this would give you at least that little thing in there to say, no, you can't demolish that just on a ministerial permit, you have to actually get it reviewed, and have someone look at it, and see if it's a property worth saving.
So can you, in terms of tonight, Matt, what would...
So if the council wanted to move forward, it would be direction tonight to staff to notice the sites of merit list, and bring them back at a future council meeting.
Okay.
With notices given to the owners.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a...
Patrick said.
Okay, a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
And could I ask, would the council like us to update the list, or would you just like to take it as it was in 2011?
No, let's update.
Let's update, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Yeah, great.
And thanks, and once again, for this, your beautiful work on this.
This is great.
It's really...
I, I especially like knowing the history of the names of the street. Mr. Bald, and Mr. Fox, and Mercer.
I, I will say that, as beautifully written as it is, the, the visual presentation that Craig did, he's such an amazing storyteller, that it is worth watching, if you haven't already.
Also, for the, for the property owners, I, I have just discovered some grants and some additional funding that they could have for big renovation projects, if they're historical landmarks. So this could really be a nice benefit.
Well, I wanted to make that point, that there are a lot of benefits that come with some form of designation, and the city council is more than welcome to add their own benefits and incentives, but the state offers a lot of incentives, simply for being a designated property like this, not even a landmark.
Thank you, okay. All right, well, we'll move on to the fourth item. We are just moving right along, right? It's the City Attorney Guided Education, the Historic Preservation is requesting to be updated on the latest SEQA guidelines. So thank you, Mr. City Attorney.
Yeah, I hadn't prepared a whole presentation tonight, mindful of the time, but if the council approves it, I'm happy to come to a future HPC meeting...
That'd be great.
...give a presentation on SEQA and historic preservation, and where the rules are, and the opportunities for the city.
That'd be great. Is there a motion for that?
Can, can we get that at city council, too?
Sure, absolutely.
Or just...
You can join us.
We can watch the, we can watch the video.
That'd be great.
Yeah, we'll sort out the mechanics of that, but yeah, we'll happen to make it available. It'll be public, so, yeah, we can sort through that.
Can I add something? There are really great resources online. There's the California Preservation Foundation, that has an hour-long SEQA basics, that's really great, and there's another hour-long called SEQA mitigation, also really informative. There's also, on Friday, it's a $15 charge, if you're not a member of the National Preservation Foundation, is doing how to do, how to bring the Historic Preservation Commissions into the future, and it's all about how to have a really strong historic commission. So I don't know if anybody wants to be a part of that. I will be attending that on the 29th, it's like 10:00 in the morning, but I can send it to you and let you know. But there's just a lot of other...
So you'll have them distribute what you're...
Yeah, there's a lot of opportunities online. I mean, of course, you know, this might, you might have newer information, because these start to age.
Yeah, no, I have no monopoly on knowledge, so, the more knowledge, the better.
It's just, it's a really good basics of all SEQA information, so I'll, I'll send it on, so you, you'll have it.
Thank you, Commissioner McHattan.
Send it tomorrow, tomorrow, send it, everybody.
Thank you very much. All right, so we do have a motion...
Mayor, if I may, can you hear me? I'm sorry.
Oh, James is here! Hi, James!
I've been here, sorry, yeah, it's just...
No, I know you are.
If I may, just as a reminder, because we have the budget tonight as well, and just for us to keep in mind, when we talk about the contingency fund and things that can be funded, this item is not in the budget. So when we approve things like this, we should get an estimate, and know that we are using some of that contingency funding. And so, Matt, I don't know how many hours you'd expect, but I would estimate a couple thousand dollars of costs for that.
I think part of it is, it's what, an hour-long training and two hours of prep, so at 2:00, 2:50, 7:50? I think we can keep it under a thousand, in short.
Okay.
There is, there is an estimate in the staff report.
Yeah, $500.
How do you feel, how do you feel about $1,000, James?
$1,500 to $500.
Well, it's more, how does council feel? Because the, the discussion tonight, I think, some of the comments we got were about some of the priorities that can be funded from contingency. So when the council's deciding to spend money from contingency, just realizing that we don't have unlimited funds there. So, so if that sounds reasonable to council, that would be council's decision.
Thank you, much appreciated.
Can I, can I, if we could have some sort of acknowledgement of an education fund, like this is, it's the National Alliance of Preservation Commissioners Best Practices, and an effective local preservation commission. It's $15, I don't mind paying, I'm sure other commissioners do, but I wouldn't mind $15 charge, but it would be nice if they were supported with our future education, with just these small amounts, that we had some sort of amount put aside that we can keep with our education and keep up on things.
Well, could we put a cap, council, of $1,000 on that? I mean, feel okay with that? We do, we have a motion on the table? Did you make a motion, Andy?
I think it'll save you money in the long run.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, a, a cap, but they come back if they need a little more, right? But, but, you know, I mean, Ojai is so known for this, we have to preserve it.
Okay, well, let's, so we have a motion from Councilmember Whitman, I do believe, and a second?
I, I just, can I make one comment? I, I, just on a general principle, I think James is right, that the only money that we have is in the contingency budget, and we can start nickel-and-diming that, and, you know, if we have under-budgeted anything, it will come out of the contingency fund. And we found in the last budget that we under-budgeted a lot. So just on principle, I'm not against, you know, I'm not against this, I'm not against a $1,000 cap, but we are gonna be talking about the budget, and everything else will come out of that contingency fund, and we haven't really even, we're not even into that fiscal year. So just keep in mind, and we're not gonna have James here to let us know that we're pulling out of the contingency fund, we're gonna have to step up the game on the money that we spend. That having been said, I don't have an objection to this particular funding.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, great. All right, well, thank you very much, Jerry Akins and HPC, and it's 6:02.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. Wow.
Thank you.
All right, we are adjourned.